Approved.
Then they likely would not ever accept taking that road as one of their own.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
You're a goldmine of information.
That's what I'm asking, is that something that is being taken care of? Is that protocol being followed?
Nothing's happened yet.
He's working on his own road at this point in time.
So you're saying that...
If he were to continue to do his own work on it and just all of a sudden said, "I think I've done a pretty good road here, would you guys be willing to take it?", I wouldn't be able to make a recommendation to the city on whether to accept it or not because I don't know how it was constructed.
Thank you, okay.
Let's move on.
Josh got some bids on dust abatement, it's 10 cents per square foot. We have a measurement of the interim of all the roads we measured that we talked about before. It's about $3,600 to do all the roads that we discussed.
Is that including...
Not including...
No.
But the price is really reasonable, I mean, in my mind, $3,600, they have to drive all the way from Coeur d'Alene. There's only one company does it, their name is EnviroTech. So, you know, we could do, yeah, quite a bit. I mean, $3,600, that seems really reasonable.
Do we need a motion to accept that?
Yes.
Make the motion to spend $3,600 to do the dust of abatement on the green roads.
Can I ask you a question, does that still include railroad by chance?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It includes railroad all the way to the grain bin, right at the gate of the mill. Like, there's like a little turnaround there.
Yeah.
Right to the turn around.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Are CDs, are they cured and maybe redeveloped and explained to you again?
The other deposits down at the bottom, I always give you how much all the funds, everything's in there. So you can see that four of those, the old rate is at 0.40. If we, if we just let it go another six months, the rate would go to 0.3. The rates are not looking good, they said they had a special rate of, what is it, 18 months is 0.80%. So, I guess my recommendation is let's just do another six months, just because it's going down, it's not going up. So we're better off being safe just for another six months and see what happens. Like I said, right now, at 0.4, every quarter, which is every three months, we're only making $50. Where, back when we were doing the 2.45, and you will see that, there's one at 48 months that is still at the 2.45 because it hasn't matured yet, that we're getting pretty close to 400 every quarter or every three months. So, basically, we were getting about 2.75, close to 300, and we went down to 50. So if we, if we do 18 and do a 0.8, we might do about 150, 175. But then we're locked in for 18 months, and I'm not sure if we want to be locked in. So I guess that's, you know, you're kind of flipping a coin here, but you can go higher for the longer period, but it's not a good high. So, at six months, yes, it's crappy, but at six months, we can reevaluate. And maybe it will go up, you know, maybe we'll get 1.05 at 18 months, and we might want to take advantage of that. So, that's my recommendation, you guys can talk about it, think about it. I have to let them know by tomorrow, so, and a half tomorrow.
We've got 30 seconds, yeah.
Well, I couldn't tell you what it made because they don't know what the rate's gonna be for Jim, so.
I'll make a motion to do it for another six month term.
I guess that was my recommendation.
You just need to think about it, just not for long.
Thanks.
I need to start presenting things like Bonnie.
I just need to know by tomorrow.
By 2:30.
Now, when do you want to explain to the, about checking?
Uh, no, with Bonnie though. Short-term version.
Okay, where's the, I think you have it.
I thought I gave it back to you. Oh my gosh, was this yours or was this mine?
I don't have it.
Is it mine?
What the heck is mine?
I've got them one.
I know everybody else does, I gave it to everyone.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Oh, there it is.
So we're looking at doing our checking, processing our checks here.
So let me, sorry, let me just interject.
Go ahead.
I went, okay, so you know we've been having to go to Lewiston or Moscow to do our deposits because they closed the Kendrick branch, which is, it is what it is. Some of the branches are better at working with us than others, I haven't had any issues with the Derrick and Lewiston branch. When I went to Moscow not too very long ago, I went in with a big stack of checks because we get a lot of checks for payments each month. And they said, "Well, because I like them to run them all, scan them all in front of me to make sure their balance matches my balance", rather than they set them aside to scan later, and then they send us a letter if it doesn't match. And they say, "Well, we've adjusted your deposit, and I don't like that, I don't like it when they adjust my deposit."
Even though they still...
So, I asked them to run it in front of me, even though it was a lot of checks. And they said, "Well, we'll do it this time because we're not busy, but in the future, if we're busy, we won't." So, in the meantime, we've talked to Nadine at Kendrick, who, they do this, and Bonnie had talked to Jason, who used to be the manager out at the Kendrick branch, about this, basically scanning it ourself in our office, and go.
And so, anyway, Nadine finally sent us the right person to contact because I had been being constantly pushed because these people are quitting all over Wells Fargo. Anyway, so they gave us a quick reference guide, so to speak. It would cost us 400 and, if we, if we bought it outright, right?
I think we have to buy the little machine outright.
Yes, yes, would be $468. And then, on the last page, it gives you all the breakdown of everything, and they're gonna charge us $75.81.
Approximately.
Approximately.
A one-time fee?
No, monthly.
Monthly.
But it sounds like it depends on the number of checks that we deposit.
They're just doing a rough draft of how many checks we have deposited in the past.
Yeah.
So this is just an estimate, but I'm kind of hoping that maybe we can kind of talk him down on some stuff.
So, I'm just confused because they're wanting to charge us $75 a month, so we run our own checks because they don't want to take the time to do it in front of you?
Pretty much.
I don't agree with that.
I disagree too.
And I don't think that that fee is why I'm not paying for them not to run it.
It would have cut down on our monthly business, we would just have to go maybe a couple of times a month to deposit cash. So there would be a little savings, because it costs, what, about $29 a month in mileage? Plus our time, which is an hour and a half?
Yes.
We get an hour and a half of time, basically, to get to Lewiston and Moscow and back and visit the bank, plus the mileage to do a deposit, and we go weekly now. Whereas when it was in Kendrick, we would go twice a week, the first couple of months when we're, or, excuse me, the first couple of weeks of the month when we're here all week, and then once a week the rest of the month.
Like, she would go, like, last, last week, she would have gone Wednesday, I would have gone Friday. This week I would go Wednesday and she would go Friday. But the big thing is, is that, okay, with gas, the pay and the mileage, that's about $115 right there a month. Then, on top of that, you're looking at...
So you're cutting four trips down to two by doing, just doing cash every other week?
Pretty much.
So that's $115 a month for all four of those trips, or just...
Yes.
So you're still only saving 40 bucks?
No, 50, actually, it would be about 57.
Okay, so $57.
$57, and then, the time, so you're looking at 3.6, 6 hours, so actually, but we're still going twice, so it'd be 3 hours, so that would be about another... I know, I'm trying to draw it on my head, because I gotta average when you get paid and I get paid, so. I would say about 75. So you're looking at about $125 there.
And how many checks on average do you guys get a month?
Does it say in my paperwork?
I think it says on the last page.
Well, it says here...
250, I think it was.
Is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, 250.
250, yeah.
I think they charge us for checks now, I mean, it's a bank, so they charge you for everything.
But what I don't understand is the $24 for the excess transaction.
Maybe because we have more than the 250 checks?
I don't know, so. Can you start this and then stop it if you don't like it?
Well, no, well, I mean, you probably can't.
Yeah, but we still have to pay.
You're still paying $500, $468 for the machine and then...
And from what I heard from Kendrick and Phil's food, the...
Oh, that's right, they do it too.
Yeah, lady, that's what got us started, because I actually went in Phil's food, and she let me go in her office and check it out and look at it and stuff, and she said that she is so grateful. And what they did for cash, she said we don't have to go into town, is they opened a checking account at Leetah, across the street. They put the cash in there, and then like once a month, they write a check and they run that check through. So, and we already have an account there, but I, we, you know, we don't have checks. I don't think that we can write out of it or anything, but, you know, there's so many cool options. I say we call and talk to them and tell them we've discussed it with you, and we come back and we revisit it next month.
We had some better numbers, she asked greater numbers.
Greater numbers, talk to them about our concerns, because we kind of didn't understand what got it. We had that on Monday.
I mean, I think that's a great idea, it's gonna save you guys time.
Or Monday, or Monday.
Well, they talked about the 75...
I'd like some better answers.
On the phone, and then she sent it to us, I think, last Thursday, but she was gone, so I, and then, so we really haven't had a chance to call them back or email them.
They really didn't make it sound like it was going to be different all the time on the phone.
Yeah.
I think it's worth getting what, like, what it actually costs for you guys to go to town every time.
A better breakdown.
Mileage or salaries, wages, and then we'll know, is it cheaper to do this, is it cheaper to do this? I mean, I look at safety of having to drive to it, because...
Especially in the winter time.
Loads of bad, but I just think...
Well, plus we take our personal car, but we're considered on the clock, so if we got in an accident, the city will still be...
I think if we have the good numbers, we can make a fiscally responsible decision and say, hey, for all these reasons, and then if somebody asks, "Hey, where did you guys do this?", we'd go, "Look, we saved this bunch of money first time", I think that's an easy sell once we have...
Yeah, and I would be happy to revisit it, we just wanted to bring it up, we wanted to show it to you guys, so you guys can take it home, maybe look at it in more detail yourselves. The more information we get, and we can always copy you guys on the email and stuff, because we, what we might do is just have conversations through emails, so you guys can...
Yeah.
Hopefully I explained it halfway decent. I know when my head looks...
It's a great idea.
But...
These are good numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, I want 45 minutes.
I know.
I, there was an extra something in there, maybe in your sack.
So, just so you know, that me and Dick kind of, we still have some questions for the auditors, especially with the waste water system, the engineer costs, how they want to do that. Tony and Bailey are coming down to discuss that and a few other things, so we will probably do that. But because it seems like every month, Justin is having some kind of breakdown, you know, like the KMEs. The waste system, you know, like the KME that had questioned and stuff like that, that we're having more issues, that even though we're hopefully start by 2022, we still gotta get through that area, that we've kind of made the waste system a little high, but better high and not use it than low and have to reopen the budget and still not know what we want to do. We also increased our capital outlet, just so that we have a little bit, a little security there also. So, like I said, me and Dick kind of did it last week at the, you know. Also, too, we haven't gotten our budget, we're lit from the state yet, so we are, basically, the state and everybody else has been on the down budget, and levies and stuff like that, so.
We've got the construction rolling in?
The construction.
New construction?
No.
It's supposed to be by the union or union.
Yes. But I mean, if you guys have any other suggestions, you can look it over. We'll have a more complete one, and what we might do is, when me and Dick feel like it's complete, we can email it to you before the next meeting in July, and that way you guys can, you know, it's not a lot of pages, it's about 10, you can either...
Because ideally, next month, we'll be approving the tentative budget ahead of the public hearing in August.
Right.
So we gotta kind of stick to the timeline.
And a tough, tough year because of the store. How do you adjust for each and every... You got grants, you got...
And we also don't know what grants we got coming in that we're gonna have to add to. We also have engineers, which is, I think, gonna be $600,000 out of not just this year, but the whole thing.
We'll work with you on trying to meet it all done out.
Yeah, but I just need to talk to the accountants because I want to know how they want to categorize everything and put it in there so that we're all on the same page, because otherwise, it ends up being a headache at audit time. So, but, yeah, with the grants and stuff like that, we can always add in, add in an account for next year and then just use that. If we have to, we can reopen just for that, so. But as long as we keep getting grants, I don't care, I'll reopen the budget five times, you know, so.
Bonnie, what we can do for you is we can put together for our particular project a schedule
of, you know, about when funds are supposed to be expended, how much and so forth.
It may not be 100% accurate, but...
Right, if we can get close for, you know, like, if we're, if we're only gonna spend like 125 the first year of engineering fees, then that would be great, because, and then each year we can do it, so. That would be, that would be wonderful, I never even knew you guys had a breakdown like that.
We almost always have to do it for cities so that they can be...
Yeah, yeah, well, and luckily I had the auditors coming, but they haven't set a date yet. But they're coming in June, so they'll be a big help too, because we kind of, me and Dick are kind of pulling our hair out. He says one number and I'm like, "Just be safe, let's go up a little more", so. Hey, so we're gonna, we're gonna discuss all the budget stuff next time, table it. Oh, table it.
Set a date for the baseball association.
Do they, have you talked to Michael or anybody?
Um, I finally, I finally got a phone call from Tonda, who, what is she, like, a bookkeeper or something like that? She said that they would, they would like to meet with us. Mike Boyer is busy doing, you know, the littler kid baseball things right now, so if we wanted to push that back a month or two, then he could attend also. Otherwise, it would probably be her and maybe Greg, and I don't know if anybody else.
Personally, I would like to hear from Michael too, because he is the one that's involved with most of it, he does most of the activities, so I would like to see him.
So, I mean, we can wait until, I can't remember, she said it would be done in July, but certainly in August, I would think. We could invite them to the August meeting, you could have a separate meeting like you guys talked about before, just to talk to them.
I don't think we need a separate meeting, I think we just need an ad meeting.
So do we want to go for July, or do we want to go for August?
August.
I think they usually enter baseball season in the middle of July.
So August would probably be better. Okay, I will get a hold of her and hopefully that will be the thing that happens.
Okay, I don't want to delay the meeting, but I need to talk about Jim Smith, just briefly. Josh and I had an experience last week that was not very pleasant, and basically, it boils down to communications. So we all know Jim Smith started his road the next day after the city council meeting. He was up there digging and plowing and all of that, and we discussed, then we had a special meeting where we discussed moving his water service, moving a valve and adding two more new water lines and meters for his lots. Well, Josh got all, the city spent $2,071 on parts for new water service connections. He never paid a penny upfront to have the water services connected yet, but we spent that much money on parts, saddles, valves, polyline, et cetera, et cetera. Josh did a diagram down at the plant, we got all ready for it. We started on it last week on Wednesday. We dug, well, we got interrupted a few times because we had to have that truck delivered, you know, that kind of thing. And we started on it, and we got down, we couldn't find the water line, it was so deep, I mean, it was, we got down to maybe five feet, not eight, but we got down about five feet, and then hit the telephone line, which blew the whistle. So we were running back and forth and having problems, and it was not a good day. Well, that evening, Jim called Josh and ripped him a new, you know what, and said, "Why is this not done?" First of all, we never discussed any kind of deadline that I remember. I let Josh deal with it entirely, because I was letting him handle this project, it's his baby. But Jim got upset with him and then changed his order to one service line and a move. The next morning, called and said, "They were already out there, could they just go ahead and finish it?" No new service lines, so we bought all that equipment for nothing. All they wanted to do was move that stuff and get done and get, because he had a load of gravel. He had loads of gravel coming that were supposed to be delivered Friday morning, never mentioned it to us.
I thought that's all he was doing was moving the line, I didn't realize there was a new service. Otherwise, he should have paid the city for a new service.
Correct.
Right. So where did that come from?
I don't know, that's what Josh said. Yeah, because he was just supposed to be, you, you guys were supposed to be moving in, not anybody else but you guys. Well, I don't know where Josh and I both heard that he wanted two service lines out there. What was there was supposed to be moved, Mike?
He was supposed to move the water main, is all we were talking about.
They were supposed to move...
They were supposed to move the main water lines that were already there. The meter, yeah, his meter.
His meter and a pressure-ducing valve.
And that was it.
Well, I don't know where Josh heard it, or is that in the text or what, but we were supposed to install, he went out and bought saddles and polyline and everything. We probably can take it back or just keep it in inventory, because what I suspect is going to happen is that Jim is gonna sell those lots to somebody and tell them it's their problem, that they're gonna have to have water going in. Anyway... Did he move that stuff? Yes, so his contractor was there when I left here immediately, went out there, his contractor was there, fuming, feeling mad and yelling, and he had equipment out there, and they had already dug the trenches and everything, and so they said, "Well, we're gonna move it, we have a $100,000 piece of equipment sitting on this hill, it has to be in Council Idaho tomorrow, we can't wait for you, and you guys have poor customer service, if we, in our, in our industry, this would never happen, you would have stayed all day yesterday and have this finished."
We don't work for Jim.
So, going forward, going forward, Josh and I are not going to be communicating with the contractor, it's going to be coming through City Hall. They're gonna pay the fee before we buy equipment, and anyway, it was, Josh almost quit, like, he literally, he would not talk to Jim anymore after that, and so I had to deal with it Friday. But it was just a very rough experience for us because we're not, there was no deadline, you know, and we were being very, trying to be very careful and not impolite him and...
Well, I don't remember him saying or asking about those two extra service lines. It was supposed to be just moving, and you guys went along, it was supposed to be just moving the meter.
He moved the water lines. Yes, so what happened... Why gives him the right to move the water lines? So what happened is, we... Am I wrong?
No, you're right.
No, you're right. So he, he should not have touched that.
Shouldn't have touched it.
I told him I didn't want him to touch them, period, and they were so mad and so furious out there. So I went out there and I inspected everything, and they did not need to dig anywhere near our water main or anything. So I, and all they had to do was pinch off the black poly and extend it and move them, so.
But that's not the point, the point is, is it's your job, not his.
Yes, correct, so...
Everything on the, the street side of the meter is yours.
Correct.
Everything on the home side of the meter is theirs.
Yes.
The meter itself is yours.
Correct.
But everything beyond that toward the home is theirs to deal with.
So, Josh left and I had a mental health day, I couldn't live by myself in the timeframe that they wanted. I looked at everything, it was fine, so I said, "Go ahead and finish what you've already", they already had everything dug and ready to go.
So it was at least inspected by you?
Yes, I was there four times and looked at everything to make sure that you're doing it correctly. So we're going to charge him for the parts that he used and that kind of stuff. But, anyway, it was just a big, giant fiasco. Well, we need to know how much time you put in there too, because we're gonna be charging for your time. Yeah, we'll have a list of everything, so it's just, I don't know what to do, I don't understand why everybody's so angry all the time and upset, and I, I mean...
It's ridiculous.
Anyway, just letting you know. I don't like the fact that he did it on his own, he should not have done that. Well, his contractor, yeah.
Yeah, but it's his contractor, not ours, yeah.
So I think Jim may have been caught in the middle in a sense, that, and Jim did apologize Friday, and said, "You're right, I didn't tell you I had loads, three loads of gravel coming", then he said, "But if it was just the real world, you guys would have had it done", we're not the real world, we're not contractors. Like she said, we don't work for Jim, we work for the city, and we have other requirements to do besides Jim's property. Yeah, so, anyway, I'm just letting you know that's what happened, it kind of left a bad taste in my mouth, so. Going forward with his properties, I don't know what will happen, but we may require him to deal directly with the office and not through ourselves.
Yeah, that's the basis, I think that's the important thing, that's all track, and we weren't...
Well, and Bonnie had talked about it, and she's like, "Where in the, like, in the real world, people email everything, email directions, email orders, so there's a paper trail of, you know, what's going on, you know, so." I think that's it, Vicki.
Only thing I wondered is whether we have, the bridge is gonna have cement. Yeah, I'll have to ask them, I don't know. You know, because I keep hearing there's cement shortage. You know, because I keep hearing there's cement shortage.
They haven't got the farms built yet.
Well, they're ready to have cement on the highway to live and out of the Greatville Harvester.
I'm wondering whether it'll be delayed, you know.
They have till October. So, we have to work cement by October.
I thought it was August, October.
Okay, that's all. I don't think I have anything. I had something, but I think Mike already asked it. This will be the last time.
How about you, Wendy?
Yeah. I am going to put something on next month's agenda about council making a motion to approve an agenda issued deadline. So, the way Bonnie's and my schedule works is that she works the full week before, the week before the council meeting and I work the full week of the council meeting. What the rules say now is that agenda items need to be to someone by forty-eight hours before the meeting, which would fall on Friday because Monday is too late and we obviously don't work on the weekend. But what that means is that I'm not here. Somebody calls on Friday just before noon and says, I want to be on the agenda. So, then I have to come down here and redo the agenda, re-put it in the window, re-put it on the website on my days off. And it's, it's just, it's harder because it just leaves everything kind of in limbo. So, I would like council to move next month because this is too late because I asked AIC if I could do this, that there is a deadline of the Wednesday before the meeting at noon. So, I have, I will be here unless I'm, you know, on vacation or something. I'll be here to take care of the agenda, to talk to anybody that calls on the phone. And, and I would really like that to go for you guys too, if, if at all possible.
I thought it was a week anyway because like when I, Mike approached me, I, I thought it was too late when I asked Bonnie.
I do, I do try to post the agenda a week early. Like I said, I definitely get it posted by Wednesday because that's my Friday. In a perfect world, I, I post it on Tuesday, but it's always changed. I mean, I can only take, think of a couple of times where I posted the agenda on Tuesday and it was the same the following Tuesday. So, that's just something that I would like to request that you guys approve next month. And also, does anybody have anything to put in the newsletter this month?
There's excessive amount of four-wheeler traffic on the trail lately. I don't know if you want to do a reminder.
I will. Thank you. I put it on bills. I put it on the Facebook page, but I will put it in the newsletter also. Can you guys, when you're down here, keep your eyes open because there shouldn't be, other than, you know, the odd city use, shouldn't be any motor vehicles on the trail at all?
Yeah, I mean, I do.
I mean, if you see it.
Yeah, yeah, and we do deal with it when we see it. It's just unfortunately, we obviously can't be here all the time. Because, you know, most days, like tonight, it's me and two other guys for the entire county.
No, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, when we see it, we do deal with it and we seem to deal with it.
With the same people, Mark?
Yeah, overwhelmingly, mostly, yeah.
In my experience, it's the same couple of people.
Like Ricky Scowes, you know, like if we know who it is, even if we catch him, if we get him there, if we like, we'll give him a little, little chat. So, if you know who it is, you might go have them go.
And camera footage is always extremely helpful because there's no disputing.
Yeah, no problem.
Uh, I forgot that.
We'll get you a grant for Polaris.
Cheerleading squad for the high school would like to do a car wash down at the park in the next couple of weeks. And they're wondering if they could do that down there and use the water to raise money for cheerleading. You just all have to go get cars washed.
The only thing I have is if, you know, I reiterate, I can't remember if we discussed it or not, but when people come to you about anything, please send them to us.
Yeah.
You know, it's just more helpful. If, if there's an accident, like even this whole Mike thing, tell them they need to come to the city to fill out a claim form, period, before you will fix anything, you know.
If somebody wants on the agenda, don't say you'll let us know. They need to have this.
And I told him that. I said, you need to get ahold of her. That's, he goes, I told you. And I said, not this Wendy, that Wendy, you know. And then Bonnie came in that day, so I told her.
But it, it's hard sometimes because I hear, oh, I want, I, I want to be on the, somebody wants to be on the agenda. And then I don't know what it's about and then I have to tell Wendy and I'm like, I don't know. So, it's just a lot easier if.
Well, it's not her place.
Or, and, you know, like with Kathy talking to you about the easement for the city, you know, she needs to come talk to us. Because by the time we get it third hand, we're already a week down, you know, and she expected all this stuff to get done ASAP. Well, it's kind of hard when we've got other, other things to do and then we don't hear about it until later, so. But I know it's a small town and everybody likes to talk to whoever they're comfortable with, but hey, you know.
Welcome to y'all's.
Otherwise, I got nothing else.
How about you, Mike?
Also, it'd be boring. We're, we're good.
Yay!
Suck it.
We're out of here.